Well, from the war as well, the church pulled them all out. It was on the news, on the church news.
Yeah, I was worried about it. We got a temple in Kiev.
In both of them, yeah.
Yeah.
This is the first time that they've had a, there's been a temple in both places. They've had a, they've declared war on it. So it's the first time in history, like further law attracts it. This is no, before this, no other place they had a temple. Had declared war on another place with a temple.
Yeah, that's interesting. And so they all made it back safe. They got them pulled out.
Yeah, yeah, there's nobody there serving. Just count the seconds, Doug.
Tick, tick, tick.
Just, just watch it.
You got two minutes.
Two minutes, yeah, so.
Few minutes to.
Tonight, we don't have, oh, there he is.
He sits down here, because he's got to be in charge of the house.
There's some problems with this map. Do they care? I mean, like, Troy's is up here.
Whoa, that's great.
Yeah, totally.
Let there be light. Don't you agree?
Natural lighting?
Don't you agree with me? Because that's, look at the park. There's the park. You go up in the park, you go up to the end of the block, and you turn right, and there's Troy's height, or Tim's high density. And he's showing the commercial right across the street, shaking next to you.
Sure? Ready to go? Good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled, whoa, that's really loud, regularly scheduled planning commission meeting for March first, two thousand twenty-two. We will acknowledge that all of our planning commissioners are here. We will begin with a flag salute led by Commissioner Morris and then an invocation after. Would you please stand and join with us?
Would you please join me in a flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather together as a planning commission. We're grateful for our city. We're grateful for all of the employees who work so hard to keep it beautiful. Our Father, we're grateful for the blessing of this area and the, the natural beauty that it has and, and the comfort and safety that we dwell in. At this time, Father, we would ask that thou would bless us with a, the ability to be, to be good stewards, that we will make good and wise choices, and that, that we will be able to push forward with appropriate concerns and, and be successful. And Father, we at this time would also ask that the war that is raging over in Ukraine, that, that lies will be comforted and that we can, that it will come to a quick resolution and that this, this horrible occurrence can be put behind. And please bless those. We're grateful that the young men who were serving over there have safely been removed. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I don't know if you'd mind taking out your noise makers, making sure they're on silent or turned down. Thank you. We will now poll the commissioners for any conflicts they may have with tonight's agenda. Commissioner Clifford?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Morris?
No conflict.
Commissioner Robinson?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Guardiola?
No conflict.
And, and I have no conflicts. Moving to item two, reports and presentations. Two A is a concept plan report for crossing at Red Desert, located approximately eight hundred south and Main Street. VE Management Investment Company LLC owner, David Lynn is the applicant. Mike, what are we looking at here, sir?
So this is a concept plan for eighty-two lots on ten acres. It is currently zone RM seven and R two point, two dash six in the high-density land use area. It's located approximately eight hundred south and Main Street. And the proposed density and use is consistent with the general plan.
We're having difficulties with our monitors. You guys got it taken care of, but that's why Commissioner Morris has turned out, because these are black.
Uh, yeah, they're kind of black too.
So we have, as, as we're looking at this, the eastern side there is twin homes, R two-ten, right? And then in the middle is town home or residential town home in the middle?
Yes, it's R two-six.
R two-six on the east?
It's the zone designation on the land use, or the zoning map.
Okay.
And then RM seven is the rest of it.
And then we, looks like we have plenty of open space and amenities there to make sure that they can get the bonuses.
We'll get it nailed down on preliminary plot, but yeah, that was what I saw.
Eight per acre.
Right, is that what it is? Eight units per acre?
I just, eighty-something, ten acres.
Yeah.
Is it an average?
Yeah, we'll do an actual square foot calculation when we, when we get the, go to preliminary plan. But it looks like, and we talked to them about open space and amenities, and they have started to show that on, on this plot here.
Yeah, they have some more amenities from previous applications for this land. So it's been, they've improved on that to make sure that they have the amenities that are nice for that neighborhood.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure on this, this is basically the, the land directly south of Hanson's storage units, correct?
Yes, that is correct, on Main Street, just north of the highway interchange.
Red Mountain Storage, excuse me.
Correct, on Main Street.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns? This is just a concept plan, just a presentation. Commissioner Guardiola?
Thank you. Mike, if, in findings and analysis, it says the TRC reviewed the plan. Identified utility, fire access, and setback concerns that will be addressed on the preliminary plan. Can you walk through what that looks like, that it will be addressed at that time?
So we basically just tell them that it's not required now, but in the future, those are some things that we look at. And so this one actually was pretty good. There was some details that Tom brought out on the engineering side, like access and where, where we're going to get secondary accesses from with the surrounding subdivisions and that kind of stuff, but it wasn't really, really detailed yet. Preliminary plan is when we get detailed.
So we will see the plan for approval. And can you help me understand why, if, if I'm a developer and I'm laying out my site plan this way and I know that these are requirements of the city, why I wouldn't incorporate these into this drawing at this point?
A lot of times they design in different places, so this is just a concept plan. And so we have to let them know what's in our ordinances. So concept plan is just, let's put something on paper, make it look close to what we're trying to do, and then we'll form it over, throughout the process before it gets to final plot. And that's when it will meet our ordinances completely. Right now, it just matches the intent of, of our land use plan.
Commissioner?
Mr. Robinson?
I, I think if I can answer that question for you, it's basically one of those situations where they would put a lot of money and a lot of effort into a plan that may not fit what we're going to allow them to do. So they do a quick concept and say, okay, are you okay with what we're starting with? Then yes, then we'll put the rest of the money into matching all of what they need us to do. It's kind of a money thing on their side. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
If we make the statement that this meets our ordinance, it doesn't yet. But it meets the intent of the land use plan on the zoning map. So we just need to mold it to get it to where it meets our ordinance. And one thing is, maybe they wanted a secondary exit off of one direction, but we may step in staff and say, hey, it works better here. So, so sometimes it's not, if it meets or if it doesn't meet, it's what works the best. Also, we, we talk about that with the TRC and with the developer. So it's kind of molding a project, whereas we're not in the final stages where we could come to and say that it does meet our ordinance now.
Okay, so it ultimately, before it comes back to us, will meet the ordinance?
The preliminary plan, yes, has had the full review. This is just a concept, an idea. Hey, what do you think about our idea?
Can I help?
Commissioner Morris?
So they, they present their plan, but they can't tell the city what to do. And so that, this is now the city's turn to tell them what they have to do.
To comply with the ordinance.
So that it's completely makes sense, you know what I mean? Because if they, they can't tell the city what they're going to do, but they can ask the city, can we do this? And then the city comes in and says, no, 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 we need another access here, we need a pool, you know, whatever. And that's, that'll come back to us and it will be approved.
Thank you. A lot of these are rhetorical questions, but your, your comments were very helpful. So my question there is, if I'm a developer and I'm going to spend this money, why wouldn't I come talk to the city first about what the ordinance is? So that what I am developing, even in a preliminary plan, is closer to what I'm trying to create?
TRC is multiple disciplines. It's not just, hey, let's go talk to Mike or let's go talk to Chuck, let's go talk to the parks. It's all of us sitting down at one time. And so that's when you want to have complete collaboration. So if you bring a concept to, to TRC, we look at it and start heading you right the direction. And then when it comes to preliminary, then we say these things have to be fixed. So little comments that we make at concept plans are just, hey, when you bring it back to us, think of these things before you do.
Commissioner Morris?
I was an electrical contractor in the area for twenty-five years, and there were five power companies. And so I would just come to them and say, this is what I want to do. Then they would tell me what I had to do, as opposed to having to learn five different manuals that are almost half of a phone book of, of regulations. And I, I think that's just all.
But conceptually, you understood the work.
I, I knew what I wanted to do. I'd done it before, but I never assumed. I, I never wanted to assume that I was going to tell the power company how they were going to, you know, provide power to this. I always wanted them, you know, I would just approach it. Anyway, that, that's the concept, I think, that we're dealing with here.
As Jeff knows, when you're designing.
Excuses them from, because there's more than five cities around here. And, and each one has its own rules, and it would just be a major undertaking, a lawyer involved to understand that.
When do Ivans do as people Ivans do, you know, with their ordinances?
Also, for your information, this is one of two parcels in the entire city that is short-term rental allowed. It's been allotted by the city council to be able to be nightly rental. Is that correct? To the west is a twelve-acre parcel, and then this is the eight-acre parcel on the east.
Yeah, I think this is multifamily and the other is short-term rental.
Both of them.
When I read it.
They both have the overlay.
Oh.
Yeah, they both have.
When I read the, the agenda.
Yeah, the application for had both the entire parcel together.
By the way, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dale?
Not Commissioner, but just a housekeeping item. I see your monitors every once in a while will blink on and off, but mostly stay off. If you'd like to do as Commissioner Clifford has done, you have your iPads there. You can pull it up on the ivans.com website, the agenda, and then click on the attachments. And you'll have it in front of you instead of having to turn around.
Yeah, he has the agenda in front of him. So just ask.
It's always an adventure when it comes to these meetings as to which electrical or audiovisual item will not work.
It's the sound, isn't it? That sound is.
They turned it on.
I feel like I'm yelling.
I apologize.
I think it's mind control, Dale. That's what the blinking is.
I don't know, it's never done that before.
You will approve this concept plan.
See, the, the two over here are not blinking. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you. All right, then let's move to, looks like we have moved to item three. Public hearing and action item, discuss and consider approval of Indigo Trails Phase One I final plant, located approximately five-ten south and Quabasah Drive, ANA Enterprises LLC owner and applicant.
Indigo Trails Phase One I subdivision consists of a total of three lots on one point zero nine seven acres. Land use is low density. The property is zone RE fifteen. Residential estate's minimum fifteen thousand square foot, which is one of the zones allowed for low density. So, so the proposed density is consistent with the general plan. And TRC reviewed the plan on February twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two and recommends approval.
This is normally when I say, I've looked at every single one of these lines, and I've actually redrawn this in my head. So I don't see any issues or concerns that I have with alignment, point bearing, or any issues either. Mike, this is well done, so. This is, this, this is my expertise right here. For, for, you know, for any consideration, if you have any questions or concerns, we can bring that up as well before Mike. But if not, I'll take a, a motion to approve the final plat.
Chairman?
Mr. Morris, Commissioner Morris?
I move that we approve the, um, final plat of Indigo Trails Phase One I, located at approximately five-ten south in Quabasah Drive.
One second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morris and seconded by Commissioner Clifford to approve the final plat for Indigo Trails Phase One I. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item three B, discuss and consider approval of Indigo Trails Phase Two B final plat, located approximately Juniper Way and Indigo, Wild Indigo Way, ANA Enterprises LLC owner and applicant.
Mike?
So Indigo Trails Phase Two B is in two zones and two land uses, medium to high, and high density. The property is owned R one seven point five and R one twelve point five. Single-family residential, minimum seventy-five hundred square foot, and single-family residential, minimum twelve thousand five hundred square foot, and which are all zones allowed for the densities, and is consistent with the general plan. TRC reviewed the plan on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, and recommends approval.
You said R one seven-five and R one?
R one twelve point five.
Twelve point five. I think these lots are.
All compliant.
Where's the smaller lots?
This is high density, man. This is high density. I love it.
I don't see any low.
There's nothing that even is close to.
So the whole, there's different phases of this, and it extends through, through a few different zones and uses. But it looked like that it may be in both, so without having the exact lines through there, I think a little bit is in the lower, or the higher density. So just to be consistent, make sure everything's been validated that we, I put both zones and land uses on there.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Any issues, concerns? I don't have any myself. I'll take a motion then.
Chairman?
Mr., Commissioner Morris?
I move that we approve the final plat of Indigo Trails Phase Two B, located at approximately Juniper Way and Wild Indigo Way.
One second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morris and seconded by Commissioner Robinson to approve the final plat for Indigo Trails Phase Two B. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item three C, discuss changes to the table of uses. Mike, can you cover it back up? Oh, Commissioner, no, no, I apologize. Oh.
No, I'm just.
Mr. Coulum?
Yes, I read the minutes from last meeting and, and I understand your recommendations for everything, but I wanted to clarify bar establishment.
Oh, please.
That it needed, and, and for that matter, sexually oriented businesses. Both need to be classified as class five conditional uses. The sexually oriented businesses were already listed in the, in that chapter of the Ivans Code as being allowed only in the commercial with light manufacturing zone. But the table of uses in the zoning ordinance just referenced either the alcohol ordinance or the sexually oriented business, or business license ordinance, and did not specify a classification. So it was unclear whether they just needed to get a permit from Mike, come to the planning commission, or if it involved planning commission and the city council, as both of those should. And so this is really kind of a cleaning up. And, and as I explained in my memo last meeting that I could not personally attend, the club license, which we previously had in our table of uses, was really for what they then called a dining club alcohol ordinance, which, you know, so there, so there was food involved and, and alcohol. And there was a, a change not too long ago that said you, you had to either choose to be a full-service restaurant and get licensed as that, or get a license as a bar establishment license, which did not require food with it. The previous alcohol ordinance would have said the dining club would have been allowed in C-one, general commercial, or resort commercial. So imagine a bar establishment with no food coming to Mike and saying, I want to open in Canyon Crossing as a resort commercial. That's probably the worst intersection in the city, that we could open a bar and have people possibly inebriated, attempt to leave and not have an accident. The second worst intersection would be, I would think, two hundred east and Highway ninety-one, which is C-one.
C-one, yeah.
And so again, same thing, I, I would hate to see just a bar establishment there. Much rather see a, you know, some type of a restaurant license used there. There was some mention about concern for black desert, but they have a lot of different licenses available. They have banquet licenses, their room service. So they have guests staying there, and so they're not driving, so they can order some alcohol to their room. They, they have dining establishments that would have alcohol licenses with those, but not, they don't have the need for just a strict bar establishment, nor would I think we want to open that in the RC zone because of the unintended consequences of every RC zone having a bar. So I think this needs to be in commercial with light manufacturing, and both of those uses need to be class five conditional uses, both the bar establishment and the sexually oriented business. In lieu of just referring to that chapter of the city code, that wasn't sufficient. So this chapter of the city code on alcohol licenses now says that bar establishments will only be allowed in the commercial with light manufacturing. The sexually oriented business chapter says the same thing. I think our table of uses just needs to reflect the same information and then needs to designate both of them as class five conditional uses so that we know what the process is if an application does come in. Otherwise, I think you covered all of the items at your last meeting. If you have any concerns with what I've just established and recommended, I'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss that further with you.
Commissioners?
No.
Commissioner Robinson?
My concern when we discussed it was that we were lumping bars with that full-service restaurant, so this is split out. This is exactly what I was concerned about, so, you know, this, I think this is perfect.
Chairman?
Commissioner Morris?
So what's the process? Is it done deal? You've done it? Do we have to vote on it?
This alcohol ordinance is a done deal.
Good.
Now, the table of uses, we would have a public hearing next meeting.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
Do we have to move to do that, or?
They're just instructions, I, I think, but you can.
Please, will you proceed with that public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you so much. That was simple, right? Thanks, Mike. Oh, Mike, your turn?
Also informational, I did a scientific study on the ord, the noise portion of the... So I drove down to Santa Clara and parked across the street and drove around the neighborhood. And I think about a hundred and fifty feet is where you cannot hear the, the dryers anymore, or the machinery. So I, I think if you were to add in the table uses, that car washes are allowed around, up to two hundred feet, fifty feet away from residential, existing residential, then that may be sufficient. And so we'll add that into what we're doing for the public comment next week. We'll add that two hundred and fifty feet in there, which, in our C-one zone, it's going to be hard to be two hundred and fifty feet away from residential and in our, in our existing zone, so, but we, we will allow that with your guys' permission.
Commissioner Guardiola, does that mean?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you're doing that, and I'm glad that you're recommending an extra fifty feet for additional buffer beyond the one fifty. Thank you. I was going to ask about that when I read the minutes. Thank you.
I love the scientific study.
That was a very scientific study. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thanks, Mike. Then we can move on to item three D, discuss the land use map, zoning map, and general plan amendments. Mike, you have a, a presentation here of what was potentially changed according to Chuck and, and the other staff members?
Yes, so with, with some subdivisions that are already in progress, that are complying with the land use and the zoning map, it's going to be a little difficult to buffer an RMU zone in that area that we were discussing. And speaking with property owners to the north, they feel that where the existing commercial and high density may be appropriate where is... So what I did is I did what you guys asked and brought it down. But Chuck, either inadvertently or inadvertently left the, the northern area.
Commercial neighborhood to the north?
Yeah, the commercial neighborhood to the north, as is. But I also took the liberty of doing the same thing along Red Mountain, without any exact zones or any direction. I just had Chuck map it out so you could see what that would look like if you did the same thing in that area. And so that, that's maybe another area to, to look at doing the same thing you were trying to do.
You said Red Mountain, where, where are you talking about? Red Mountain?
You got a pointer? You mean the, the road?
Oh, okay, Red Mountain Elementary.
Red Mountain Boulevard, just south of the, the school there.
Okay.
And along that plane there. So I thought that that may be something you guys would, would want. So I thought that that may be something you guys would want to look at, maybe pulling a little resort mixed use over there, and there's already some commercial and some, some densities there.
Yeah, I see one. Commissioner Morris found some errors and that he wanted to speak up, and then I think Commissioner Robinson has something to say.
Maybe I could just point this out afterwards, but it just, this, this commercial neighborhood is in the wrong place, it just needs to be up.
Okay, I'll talk to Chuck.
Because that's Troy's.
Okay.
And where you have it is next to my lot.
Okay, I'll talk to Chuck. And sometimes there, what Chuck's explained is he's clouded before, and so if it's a cloud, it may be a general vicinity, like, come on, kind of like the commercial, neighborhood commercial you have down at the southern part of Ivans. It's just a cloud, which kind of says it's just kind of in this area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it, if it's not, if there's no accuracy to it.
I'll, I'll talk to Chuck about it.
Our concern is we just want people looking at this and going, gosh, I could have this next to me if I buy this.
Yeah.
If I buy this lot, you know, that, that, so I, I think the accuracy is important.
Yeah, I'll talk to Chuck to get it pinned down and make sure, so. It's one of the two, either it's in the wrong place or it was a cloud previously that he left clouded.
You can move it one to the right, that'd be fine.
Commissioner Robinson.
So the, the property you were just talking about at the end of Center Street, correct? Who we were talking about? I, my understanding was is we were talking about moving the, the commercial down, but instead we've gone with residential mixed use, is that what?
Well, the, the commercial, so residential mixed use is a commercial zone, and it has all those other buffers in that zone already.
Okay.
And so I thought that was the easiest way to represent it.
Okay.
As RMU, and then you guys can decide, hey, no, this is neighborhood commercial, or this is high density, or, or that, I just kind of moved the bubble.
Yeah, it makes sense what you're saying.
But Chuck left, left the commercial up above in, either inadvertently or inadvertently.
Okay.
And then, Mike, would you explain what, what, the, the exceptional thing that you did was talked to the landowner and asked him about leaving that change there. He talked to Lance Anderson and the, and the landowners in that area that was a commercial neighborhood that was north that we were going to move down, and that gentleman said that he wanted to keep a commercial pod up there, so it was a benefit between the citizen and the, the staff here to make sure it worked out well for all parties concerned.
Yeah, I like it.
And the, the difficult thing about where that RMU land use was prospectively placed is that there are houses there.
Right.
And there, it looks like it's farmland also, and it's actively being farmed, so this isn't something that would happen anytime soon.
In that factor, we, we, we're talking about this earlier, about changing the zoning of these certain areas, because we're kind of, we're talking about this map, but we're, but the zones don't match a lot of what we're doing with this map. Isn't it still, and, and isn't this what we were kind of instructed to do, was to change some of that zoning to get it to the map, the maps to match? Even though, and I, even though there's farming going on right there, we would, even if we changed the zoning, because it's, it's grandfathered in, they'd continue to do what they're doing there, but once that land was sold, then it would have to be dealt with as the new zoning. That would be my understanding.
Yeah, I, I think it's fair to leave the property rights and the owner of the property, and by changing the zone yourself, you're actually making decisions for them that, in my opinion, should be theirs, who they sell their property to, and how they, how they sell, use their property. And so zone changes, I, I don't believe it's, it's a good idea to do without having an application in front of you. What we're doing on the land use portion of it, and as you notice, he put sandbox land use plan, and so we're, we're playing around right now with, with different ideas on what in the future we want.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coulum.
They don't necessarily need to match. I think the land use plan represents your vision for what the city will look like in the future, and the zoning represents what it might be currently, but down the road at some point it would change to that future item. I don't think we want to go around changing the zones and making people's current use legal non-conforming, even though that use would pass to a new owner and would, would continue indefinitely, but they wouldn't need, they wouldn't be able to make any changes to it, all they could do is maintain that use. But, and, and so, for example, Lightfoot's, I'll use that as an example, we changed that from C one to neighborhood commercial, and at the time, natural gas was, was in for an alternative fuel for cars, and so they said, why don't you put in some natural gas pumps? And they said, we can't, we can't expand the use because we're legal non-conforming. They said, why don't you expand, you know, to the north a little bit, and they said, we can't, we can't add on, add on to our building because we're legal non-conforming use. All we can do is maintain our current building, our current pumps, and just maintain the facilities we have. So eventually, the council went back and changed it to C one, so that it truly represents the use that it is, and they're free to keep up with the times, as it were. So I, I think that's kind of drastic, sometimes you might decide to do it, but I think that ought to be used sparingly. But the land use plan can differ from the zoning because it's representing your vision for the future. Currently, we have, you know, we've matched this holding area where we haven't designated a specific use, and, and the land use plan could change and say, no, we see this area becoming, you know, a higher density than what it's currently showing. Maybe it goes from low density to medium density, an area, or maybe an area is decided that, that, the way the city has developed, maybe that will be a neighborhood commercial hub or something. And so you could change it on the land use plan, but not change the zoning yet until somebody comes in, a property owner comes in and says, now I'd like to change it to meet the, the land use, and then you're respecting the property rights.
One more.
Commissioner Robinson.
So when we first started this whole thing, and we had the city council with us, some of the discussion that night was, is they wanted to start on some of these, like the black desert area, for instance, how it was R, is it RA five or R five, but five acre lots, anyway.
Yeah, RA five.
RA five. And because we did that as a holding zone, and they wanted, they specifically said we wanted to look at changing those almost immediately, that was the first thing we talked about doing, was changing those zones. So do we not want the zoning, I mean? So we don't want to do that, that was kind of an overreach, but in the first discussions is what I'm getting.
If, if we know what the, what the plan is and, and what they're, and we've got plans for an overall development, and we recognize that the zoning doesn't match, the city could, on our dime, say, we're going to remove a hurdle for you down the road, and we're going to go ahead and change the zoning to match what your intention is and what we agree with. Or they could wait for the applicant to come in and say, we'll pay for it, and, and here's the zone we would like. So you got both options, but at a minimum, they wanted an asterisk with an explanation that what is currently shown may not be what is actually what the property ends up to be.
That was the argument, was these people expected five acre lots, and when it wasn't, it was a huge, and it was like, we never did expect it, but.
Correct.
So, okay.
And the asterisk goes on the land use.
It could go on both, but certainly the zoning.
Zoning too, good. I'm an asterisk guy, I've been that way all along.
Me and Chuck have started on the language on the asterisk, and it actually basically sees, says, see land use map, so.
Yeah, I like that.
It's a little bit more refined than that, but that's the direction we're going, and I was hoping it was actually on this map, but he, he didn't get it on in time, so. It, it isn't, that asterisk language isn't working for you guys to see, it's just not on there yet.
Right, I appreciate that. All of those great comments, because they were brought up with the city council as well, so, thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Gold star. I really appreciate that resort mixed use, as we've done in the past, it's been a, a cloud, or a bubble, or an area. What you've done is completely taken those three, four parcels and make it into the whole, the whole element to be resort mixed use. Is that a direction we want to go, rather than a bubble, to take the entire parcel and make it that way, or is it consistent with previous?
Typically, land use uses more bubbles, zoning uses more property-specific boundaries.
Okay, so, yeah, as we looked at that previous with the commercial, the neighborhood commercial and the high density and medium density around that, no to the north, we were thinking that that would come down as a bubble to have high density around a neighborhood commercial system. Perhaps we could, kind of, those are ten acre parcels, yeah, I was, as, as I was talking to Commissioner Guardiola, that it would be similar to the one to the north.
So, so you wanted to see like a circle with surrounding MDR?
Yeah, very similar to the one to the north there.
Okay, so, so you'll have us, just a circle with, with MDR around it, or is there, or would you like to see high density? Because I, I kind of see if you want to buffer.
I, I see the high density to the north and the high density to the south, that if we put commercial neighborhood as, as a bubble around that intersection, we still have high density to the north and high density to the south as we come through there. Do you, do you see where I'm at? So if we, yeah, well, on, on the, on the intersection of Center Street and six, and seven hundred west, you've got there? Center Street, yeah, a little bit more, there's, that's six hundred there, but seven hundred would be the one, just to the west of that one, right in the middle where RMU is said, yeah. So if that circle is centered on that, where it says that text is RMU, we have the high density to the north that could neighbor with the high density there, and then high density to the south, which would, it would correspond with, it's already zoned.
Yeah, so, we have the LDR there, so there needs to be some buffering.
Yes, please.
Through here also.
Yeah, yes, please.
So instead of a block, it would be more of a, two, two bubbles.
Right.
A big bubble and maybe a small bubble here.
Some radius, radius bubbles as they come out of that center core.
Okay, yeah, and the commercial neighborhood may be a little bit bigger of a bubble too, but it's kind of hard, there's not a lot of room there to, to buffer.
I was thinking that this bubble could come down, this would be high density here, and then this could be, this is low density on the east, but it's medium density there, but then it could also be commercial neighborhood, a bubble to the southeast, as you said, right? As you, you show that, that commercial neighborhood, that small piece at the bottom right.
Yeah, there, there is some open land there, and there is.
Yeah.
Possibilities, so.
It's just, yeah, as, as, we've had it in the past, they're more of a, a bubble, more of an area, you know, centralized, and as we look at urban use and urban footpath and whatnot, that you have a central core around shops and usage, but then you have residential as it radi, as it expands out from that core, rather than just a, a block usage. You also, oh, Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. We seem to be going back and forth between land use and zoning, and I'm not sure that a lot of the people understand the nuances between the two. When you start talking about bubbles, you're talking about kind of amorphous land use. When you get down to talking about specific zones, you're in zoning.
Yes.
And once, once you put a label on it with a, with a particular zone, then it pretty much freezes people's thinking about concepts, because it's, it's basically zoned, even though it may not be. So I'm just thinking, do we have, do we have the right language or methods of talking about this, this concept of land use, which is, is, you can't direct it in a way, because it's going to happen. A lot of times, it, it happens because if someone comes in, buys a piece of property, gets it rezoned, and then it suddenly, boom, then you got a pocket of commercial, a pocket of something. But, you know, when you get down to hard zoning, I mean, that's, that's all you can put there. I mean, we, we put limits initially, this property will be zoned so and so, and therefore that's what's going to have to go there. So I, I don't know, I guess I get, I get confused, we were talking about areas and bubbles, but how do you describe that to someone who wants to know the, the general direction the city's going? And, you know, you, you're doing it, but we don't have a bubble designation. So when we go out to talk to people, how are you going to show that to some people graphically, that, that this is just a, a description of something that we think is possible in the future, but it's not cast in concrete? I'm just, I'm trying to think, if I were going to one of our meetings of our citizenry, how I would present this to them and help people understand? Because I still think most of the comments that we're getting from people.
Can I just make a comment?
Pardon?
Could I make a comment?
Yeah.
So if you, if you want to tell people what your city's going to look like in ten years, how, how would you tell them you, you vision your city? Do you have walkable, walkable communities? Do you have just big lots, bedroom community? How are you going to tell, tell your grandkids and kids what your city's going to look like?
I think maybe, maybe we need a way of showing it graphically, though, and we need a whole new idea that this is a bubble, you know, this is where we see commercial in this area, but it's not hard zoned yet, because it's owned by somebody who hasn't decided that's what's going to happen there.
May I?
Yeah.
So as, as I look at it, even though we're talking about zoning map and changes of that, I, I don't, according to what Dale has said just recently about takings and rezoning people's land, I don't think that's a good idea even to touch the zoning, because that changes their ability to.
To do what they want.
To do what they want. But as we look at the land use, and that's the bubble, what do we want, what we want to have in the future? What, what do we want? And as, as we've progressed through the development of the city, we've seen that the areas that we have bubbles on with for resort mixed use, or, or obviously schools are set in stone, but in the city, the land is there controlled by them, but as we look at places like Coyote Gulch, oh, we want a commercial around here, perhaps, we, as we talk to the citizenry, as we talk to the people in city, in the city, that we, we do a bubble around that area that I was just discussing, but then as we come through, we say, hey, we think the commercial area should be this big. But as they come in, they're like, well, I, I think that we should be bigger, I think we should be smaller, and we should take that into account. The graphical representation really is the land use plan, we should not even be looking at the zoning at all.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Okay, so that's, that's my representation, is that if we, if we show a bubble or an area as we plan it, and then we bring it before the, the citizens, you know, then we say, hey.
It's an idea.
Is, is this big enough? Is this small enough? Is this, what do you think? And that, that input really needs to come so that we can get this to be a city, rather than a planning commissioner or a city council city.
I agree.
Good question, thank you.
What clarifies it for me is that we're not dealing with the zoning map, that's really clicked, you know, that's where it finally clicked in my head.
Yeah.
You know what we're trying to do here, this is a vision.
Yeah, even though that was a different direction when we first started our meeting.
Yeah, when we first started, I was picturing telling a farmer he's going to have to pay low-density property taxes from now on, you know, that was my fear, but I'm glad to hear that I was, I didn't understand.
Another area that changed, as Mike brought it to me, is the area around the Vista Medical Center. It's, is it resort mixed use right now, Mike?
Yeah, that's, those are current, but those are areas to look at. It's south of there, on Red Mountain, is when we, we did a little bit of sandbox play.
Right, but all, all of those eighty acres on the north of Center Street, be from between one hundred, three, two hundred east all the way over, oh, it is, it is already that way. I'm, but the, the pink, the, the pink above Center Street there.
Yeah, the bigger one, up there, there, there.
Yes, those eighty, it's already resort mixed use, okay?
But that, that makes, that, that clarifies again a little bit of where you're going to do your, some. of where you're going to do your, some future um, mixed use. Along those traffic corridors, and so that's why I add a little bit more to the south.
Right.
If you guys didn't like the one that was on the west, maybe you might like the one a little bit closer to the, the center or maybe even both. Um, same type of attitude of throw a couple of bubbles in there and see, see if we like that for the future for um, the things that we talked about.
So Mike, what's the question? What's the difference between resort mixed use and commercial, commercial neighborhood? Is it uh, just the uses, is there something that's?
Well, I think we also have a discussion about the resort and exactly what's in there. So right now, um, RMU is RMU.
Okay.
Where it may be more appropriate that it's called resort. And you have RMU and commercial resort in there and maybe the RV, commercial RV also. And so, we, we may want to look at, at that while we're doing the land uses. And so, by doing that, you're kind of grouping your commercial um, non-resort separately from your commercial resort.
Right, and so as, I was looking at that bubble that I suggested on seven hundred west is that perhaps it shouldn't be a bubble of commercial neighborhood, it should be a commercial, it should be a, a bubble of RMU to give the allowances and, and the uses in that area to be.
Well, RMU is, is a, is resort mixed use, it's the one zone allowed in RMU. Whereas if we start to diversifying between a resort, commercial and commercial, then you'll have a little bit more separation in where you're doing your resorts and where you're doing your commercial. But uh, I think Ivan's, the intent of Ivan's want, wants more of the resort rather than the apartments and and uh, identity transient without the um, um, reserve bookings through a single source. We want them to be the traditional resort or
Right.
Or a traditional hotel.
So as you put that bubble on there, I would suggest that we use the RMU like you have, but yet cloud the areas around to the north and to the south to be high density residential rather than a commercial neighborhood using the RMU rather than a, a bubble of, of commercial neighborhood. What have you got?
What is that little spot of commercial that is there? What am I missing? Where are you pointing?
Just on, on uh, on the east side of six hundred west.
Right, where am I at now?
It's over there, you need to be on the other one.
Right, there, there's a little itty bitty spot of commercial.
Neighborhood.
Commercial neighborhood right there.
Is that already on or was that uh?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that was placed on, so that was just a thought to do commercial neighborhood in that small section versus the so RMU is, that, that's a presentation by Mike to present.
To, to do that, okay.
Yeah, do we want that there or do we want that to be?
In my opinion, that, because we, we're trying to buffer the commercial stuff more than say RMU. RMU, it, it kind of buffers itself kind of thing is our theory, I guess.
Right.
So I think that commercial would almost be counterproductive.
In that area?
Yeah.
Yeah, so a recommendation that that be removed.
Now, that's not where you talked to the landowner and he wanted to keep it, okay, good, thank you.
No, the, Lance wanted this piece up here, but we're looking at that one down there.
Yeah, that was just a thought of how are we, how are we going to get some other options other than the resort mixed use? Maybe we'll add a little bit of commercial ne- neighborhood and understanding the table of uses of what's allowed and and what's not allowed. I'm, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent up to speed either on which ones are allowed. But uh, on our first little exercise we did, um, most of those were allowed in the CN zone, or a lot of them were. And then there, there's the ones that are just specific for the C one zone. And then when you do the resort, then you're basically looking at taking care of the resort, but doesn't include the beauty shops and that kind of stuff per se. But it's uh, more of a spa type use. And so like I said, one thing that's not in our toolbooks is just a separate mixed use where you separate it from a resort mixed use and say, yeah, this is more of your walkable community that is for the residents rather than um, a resort mixed use, which is for vacationers.
Commissioner Robinson?
So the, the gas station, the new one up the street here is actually in resort mixed use. Is that, that from what this looks like, it shows that that's what it's in?
I believe there's some changes.
I think it's resort commercial.
Yeah, on the zoning, it's RC, but on the zoning, it's RMU.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's.
And that would be kind of consistent with what Mike's recommendation is. On the pink on the land use, instead of calling it RMU, which really only has one zone that you could change it to, we, we change it and just call it resort. And then we put zones under it. You could have RMU, which would be where you take a residential um, zone and you combine it with a commercial zone and you have a, like a written text almost like in a planned development and, and kind of create some special zoning for that um, area. But you would also have your resort commercial and perhaps your um, RV park resort commercial there, you would have now under that pink, you would have three choices of zones that you could go to and it, it would be a little more consistent with what we've, what we've got showing between the land use map and the current zoning. There's a lot of times where it's a pink RMU and, and yet it's zoned uh, resort commercial. And um, and I think that's just because it's, it's labeled wrong with, with only one zone, that's all it can be. It really needs to be broader than that and then bring in all of the resort type uses under that land use. I think that would make more sense.
Yeah, sounds like it's making sense to everybody here. Yeah, Mike, would you proceed with the resort group?
So, um, the uh, areas south of the school that I've also played around with, I kind of think that if I had a mixed use zone to play with, I would have put mixed use there, more of a community rather than vacationer type mixed use where, you know, you could walk from your apartment or your house or your whatever's surrounding the commercial, that it would be more of a mixed, traditional mixed use rather than a resort mixed use. More of a walkable community type, type thing.
That's the center of David Haven's?
Yeah.
Farm then? Okay, just want to make sure I'm oriented.
And I've understand, I understand that there has been some requests there previously.
Yeah.
Some interest.
Commissioners?
I like the idea of going with the more broader resort, well then we can allow within that
Subsections.
Subsections, I, I like that idea.
Yeah.
What are, what are your thoughts about a mixed use? Is that something you see in our future or just?
Yeah, I think that uh, that with the walkable area and the usable space that if we have a, a mixed use between commercial and residential, that'd be nice to have, uh, you know, we had looked at that as a planning commissioner, commission a few years ago about having apartments or, or second story areas in the commercial area, having residential above uh, retail and commercial elements below. So it's, it's, you know, you stay and you shop, you stay and you go to dinner, you, you do that all in one place. You remove the amount of fossil fuels and carbon footprint that we're looking at. As gas prices jump, we want to make sure that we are, you know, being responsible to make sure that we're not causing people to have to drive so far. If it was here, it'd be nice if they could stay.
Well, I'll draft, I'll draft stuff for future consideration and uh, I, I think that we're on a good path to, to get it closer and closer. I think sometime soon it will be time to get to actual boundaries and instead of just ideas, start to actually say this is exactly where we want it. So hopefully I could get a quicker map out this time and then you guys bring back maybe some changes.
And they get to our public hearings and make sure that everybody's aware of what we're going to do and.
Yeah, and our open houses.
Get their inputs, of course. Thank you, Mike, appreciate your time on that. Commissioner Clifford?
What is the, the current plan for the open houses?
I was thinking that up to you, I, I suggested early, but I, I think it is a good idea to have a plan in front of.
The mayor hasn't set up a time that he.
I think that's up to you guys to set the time. And tell us when you're ready. Because I, I think that the recommendation is have something to present to the community and then have them come in and and give you opinions about it on an open house and then have the public hearings.
I, what I would suggest is we do a beta on it, we get it kind of where we think kind of makes sense and then we do bring in one little group and have them critique it before you take it out to everybody. And then let them give us some input on how that's being perceived.
Community leaders.
Well, just, yeah, random, you know, random sampling of our citizenry, have them come in and give us some input on it.
Yeah.
And then take it en masse to everybody.
Is the, is the city council people we should bring in to have critique?
City, city council?
He's back there.
Lance is back there.
I don't know, but I'm just saying, because you, you know, you want to bring in a group of people and have them critique what we've done.
I, no, the city council's too close to it. You want to get people who are, are going to be the ones you hope come to your open house.
And, and, and as, as we look at these elements that were changing, maybe perhaps those people that are, that are the city, the owners of those pieces could come in and.
Yeah, they can give their own books, so.
Yeah, for sure, but then also random, you're right.
But we want, we want this to be understandable to the citizenry. Because that's, that's who right now does not understand. The people that are savvy about zoning and all this, they, they know. But it, it's the random person that thinks uh, I got this piece of property next to me, it's never going to change, I'm loving it and then suddenly it doesn't. And um, then they're mad.
The vision for the open house was two commissioners and two councilmen. And then you don't have a quorum and you have the people actually voting, listening to the people, so that's how I see it, but you guys could tell me something different. I'm on your guys' schedule now.
We don't want to have a quorum when we don't want to, because I got called on that today, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Guardiola.
Could we elaborate a little bit more on how we would select who would be in that, that first, that beta test? So that there's not the perception that we've handpicked who's going to be there, or does that matter?
Do you have a suggestion?
No, that's why I'm concerned about it. Dale, do you have suggestions on how we could do a beta test?
No, I, I understand the idea and I like it, but I, I don't know how you.
Well, you could ask for volunteers.
Do a random program and assign it to specific lots and then just have, have the computer pick numbers.
Congratulations, you've been selected for jury duty.
We do it with bingo all the time.
Just provide donuts.
Put your name in the hat.
We can get a can with the popsicle sticks and everybody's names written on the popsicle sticks and we could pull their name out.
If you're behind on your water bill.
Just go randomly, but uh, anyone here could bring a friend and we could have a, this group right here would be an excellent choice, so. Anyone attending, so.
Let's, let's get a little bit closer.
Get a bit closer then we'll uh, yes.
I think Commissioner Clifford's concern is that it's understandable.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's why we want to do a little beta test on it, you know, people just look in their glazed eyes and between R and RMU.
Yeah, I just, I just, how are we going to do it so that it appears equitable? I, I'm right there with you, just how do we do it equitably so no one feels that there was an unfair advantage?
Tell them you're going to turn off their electricity. They have to be down here at six.
That'll be, that'll be just.
I get a few of them here with pitchforks.
You always give me great material.
Thank you, Mike. Um, moving on to item three E, uh, discuss and consider approval of the Ivan City Planning Commission meeting minutes for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any modifications, changes, Commissioner Guardiola? You have a, you have your highlighted sections there?
Well, I do have highlights, uh, Mike very nicely answered one of my questions. Uh, yes, in fact, he answered both of my questions, so I have huzzas all around.
So no changes to the minutes?
No changes, no, recommend, or I'll move for approval.
Lance, any changes?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Guardiola and seconded by Commissioner Morris to approve the Ivan City Planning Commission meeting minutes for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries unanimously. Moving to item four, reports. Commissioners, any reports? Nothing from the housing committee, anything like that, okay? I don't have anything else to add. Mike, you need some more, oh, Commissioner Robinson?
Uh, just, um, we did get approved for the youth council.
Youth council, right.
Um, so they are, we're moving forward with that and currently trying to get out to the members of the community so the youth can understand what's going on and get, hopefully come, apply.
And what is?
It's not in the newsletter.
And what is, what is the age?
It, it's the, well, they're doing it from, um, they're taking applications from eighth to eleventh grade because it'll actually happen next year's school season, so they'll be ninth through twelve.
Well, they'll be serving between nine and twelve.
Nine and twelve year.
Okay.
Uh, of high school age, so.
Thank you for that.
And, and we do have posters that we can, we can um, place. And so if, if any businesses could reach out to us and we'll be reaching out to businesses. I know I'm going to put one down at my church on the bulletin board, so just try to get the word out.
Thank you. Mike, oh, Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, I have a, a suggestion. This is totally out of the, the context of what we're talking about. Let's get rid of these things so we can see people and just use the little, little, little laptop, I mean the
Little iPads.
Tablets.
Tablets.
I mean, this, you feel like you're hiding down here.
Raise that seat up. Kilroy, my nose.
Yeah, I could jack my chair up, but then I. I, I don't, let's just use the iPads.
The one on the end, do you like, is that one a, a good compromise where it plugs into the system?
Yeah, that may be, yeah.
Hold that smaller monitor.
Yeah, we took the stand off and just put it in.
Yeah, maybe if you lowered it a damn cent, but this.
Or can we, can we set them down just to where, you know, they're like a piece of paper?
I was going to ask Lance, but he got away.
Well, I'm not too impressed with these great commercial grade monitors myself. I'm, I'm more impressed with the Walmart one down at the end.
So it's like a piece of paper.
So we'll, we'll work on it.
All if it's down here.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
Are the screens big enough?
It's just, as Commissioner Morris talked about, if the, if the, if the monitor is placed horizontal versus vertical, then, or more of an angle, then it could be down and out of the way, but still be large to see.
Let's ask somebody on the city council if they like it.
Do you like hiding behind your monitor?
I still, I would still like a tomato screen, but see-through.
You want a.
Are the screens on the iPads big enough?
I, I find them sufficient to be, to be used.
Well, then you can blow those up.
Yeah, then you can get touchscreen and you can move it around. Yeah, the, the iPad, the tablets are much easier to use.
Tablets are nice.
I have no report.
No reports. Uh, Dale, did you need to add some more?
Well, no, I'll, I'll work on that. Um, you've got the iPads. But we'll work on seeing what we can do with monitors also. And we'll continue to work on we'll call our AV guy back and it's always a new problem. I think he diagnosed at least and repaired the sound when it would die off and come back fifteen seconds later. It was the amplifier didn't talk nicely with, didn't play well with the switch. I don't know why they were designed to, to be in the same uh, to work like that, but um, anyway, they, the uh, amplifier company gave him a workaround and, and it sounds like we got it.
We're amplified.
Repairs this time, so. Now I'll just keep you up to date on, on how we're coming on AV. Zoom has now been, the workaround has been removed from, you don't have quite as mu- as much stuff on my place here, it's, it's in the AV closet. We'll try it out um, the new way uh, on Thursday, so.
Excellent.
Hope it works better.
And then future agenda items, anything coming up that we need to know about other than what we have already? Uh, you had your concept plans and.
Yes.
Yes.
I've been out in the field the last few days, so I know DRC has a few things on our agenda and more, more of a little bit of everything.
We like it, thank you. Uh, then moving to item five.
I move adjourned.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.